Back into session, we had an earlier meeting, so I will call it into session. Do we need to do the roll call then for each one again?
Yes, let's.
Yeah.
Erickson?
Here.
Bussie?
Here.
Carter. Carter, I know you were there. Probably doing her hair. Um, Hunt. Carter, okay.
Carolyn, that went on tape without context.
Hunt.
Here.
Keller.
Yes, I am here.
Luns. Absent. Peterson.
Still here.
Thank you.
And I would like to call, I'd like to call to order the Bloomington City Council as part of the City Council Port Authority Concurrent Meeting tonight on April 6, 2021. And if you could please do the roll call for the City Council, I'd appreciate it as well.
Sure. Bussie?
Present.
Baloga? Um, he is just coming in right now, so. Um, Mr. Baloga?
Present.
Thank you. Carter.
Appears to be having internet, internet issues.
Okay. Coulter?
Present.
Alman?
Here.
Martin?
I'm here.
Nelson?
Here.
Thank you. All present.
Thank you. So we have, uh, as I said, a concurrent meeting between the port and the council this evening, and we've got a couple of items on the agenda. I think, uh, the first item that we have to take care of is to do the approval of minutes from our March 2nd, 2021 Concurrent City Council and Port Authority Meeting. And so from a council standpoint, I would look for a motion to approve those minutes.
So move. Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Coulter to, from the council side, to approve the minutes. Hearing no further council discussion. Carolyn, if you could please call the roll.
Bussie?
Aye.
Baloga?
Aye.
Carter, and I will.
Aye.
Thank you. Walter?
Aye.
Alman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero approved.
And then I would entertain a similar motion for the approval of the Port Authority minutes from March 2nd, the concurrent meeting.
Can I interrupt for a second? I don't know when I'm supposed to do this, but I have a correction.
Okay.
Um, on page eight, at the bottom of the last sentence of the paragraph that refers to me, I think the sentence there is, uh, doesn't quite capture what my intention, so I would prefer to have that deleted.
Noted. I will remove that.
All right, I'm enthusiastic.
So with comment, I'll move that the minutes be adopted with the change as proposed by Commissioner Keller.
So we have a motion made by Commissioner Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion, any additions and corrections? Carolyn, do you want to call the roll?
Sure. Erickson?
Yes.
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Luns. Absent. Six zero.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening. Let me get back to the agenda. We've got a couple of items, actually. We have, uh, two items under new business, the strategic response for Bloomington businesses and something on our legislative policy, consideration of some hospitality legislation. So, uh, the first item here is strategic response for Bloomington businesses. Mr. Rudlang, if you could please lead us through that one, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President, members. Um, so tonight we have Barb Wolf and Becky Schindler who will provide some detail on, on this program. Really, this is the beginning of the conversation that, um, we'll have with both the port and council on work that is related to business development in Bloomington to expand what we're already doing, particularly as it relates to small businesses. And so with that, I will turn it over to Barb and Becky.
Good evening, Barb and Becky. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mayor, council members, Port President and Commissioners. I'm Barb Wolf, and I work in the Community Development Department along with Becky Schindler. Tonight, Becky and I have a brief presentation to review the assistance and resources available to the Bloomington business community through city and Hennepin County efforts. Uh, last year, Becky and I both worked on the Small Business Assistance Loan Program in 2020, uh, which was funded through CARES Act money. And as we began the outreach to the business community, it became clear that the city could do a much better job in developing and building relationships and trust with businesses. So, uh, throughout the year, we did continue those connections by sending out relevant information to any of the businesses that applied to the loan program, whether they received funding or not, um, just to let them know about resources that came available, such as the Hennepin County Grant Programs. So tonight, we will review current resources the city and county are providing, and then staff suggested approach to future assistance. So towards the end of 2020, with CARES Act funding, Hennepin County developed a new online platform called Elevate Business HC. And the goal of the new platform is to provide resources to help rebuild, reestablish and reignite businesses within our small business communities and really in, um, in response to, uh, the pandemic. So this program provides up to 50 hours of free technical assistance to any and all businesses within Hennepin County, um, as easy as going to the website and registering. So, uh, this assistance can take many forms, uh, whether that be, uh, peer-to-peer roundtables, webinars, group training, or just one-on-one coaching. And all of these technical services that are actually provided through the platform and administered are done by local businesses. So it's sort of a win-win on both sides of the, uh, spectrum here. Um, and each one of these businesses contract with Hennepin County, so they are paid for their services. And the funding for this has been allocated through April of 2022. And many of these organizations on the platform, they, they have specialized technical services, and some of them have specific languages or cultures or, um, are in a, in a geographic location throughout the county. So, and many of these providers do provide needed resources to underserved and marginalized businesses and their communities. So here I will, um, turn it over to Becky here, and she will provide an overview of current and proposed business assistance.
Thank you, Barb. Good evening, Mayor, President and members. I'll continue going over our current business assistance program and then touch on our proposed business approach. So first, uh, the city has partnered with Hennepin County since 2013 to offer the Open to Business Program through MCCD, our Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers. The program provides advising and technical assistance to small businesses already in Bloomington or Bloomington residents looking to start a business. This technical assistance can include business and strategic planning or marketing and communications planning. The program also offers businesses access to capital. Bloomington's business advisor is John Endress, who offers one-on-one appointments by phone, our Zoom calls as of right now, but he will have office hours again in the near future when Civic Plaza reopens to the public. Staff has promoted this program in the past with articles in the briefing and social media posts, and we will continue to promote it. Next slide, please. As Barb mentioned earlier, staff administered the SEABLE program in 2020 with underwriting done by John Endress with MCCD and program promotion by our CoEd Division along with the Alliance. A total of $950,000 in CARES Act funding was used for business loans and program administration. The city was able to help 152 businesses with fees forgivable, forgivable loans. Eighty-six of those were small businesses who received $7,500 and 66 were self-employed people who got $3,000. Next slide, please.
You know, Becky, maybe you can just comment with that slide. About how much time do you think it took just to process every one of those? I mean, this, this has been a massive undertaking that we really appreciate all the efforts you've done and Barb and others, I'm sure, but it's, it had to be a major part of your workload for the year.
Uh, Mr. President and members, um, yeah, Barb and I worked together a lot this last year, um, along with Tracy Smith from CoEd, and then, um, we had weekly meetings with John to go over, you know, his underwriting of the program as well, but it definitely kept us busy.
Well, thank you very much for all your efforts, both of you.
Becky, I, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Hunt?
Becky and Barbara, I think you're underestimating the value you brought to the program and this because I'm quite sure, um, you're understating the countless hours that you did put in, and thank you, Mr. President, for, uh, um, commenting on that to them too as well.
Thank you. Okay, next slide. Hennepin County also had a small business relief program, as Barb stated earlier. They funded it in five different rounds. They provided $69.4 million via 6,400 grants. Of that total, 296 grants were awarded to Bloomington businesses who received $3.44 million. Grants range between 3,000 and 30,000 from Hennepin County, and a list of those businesses was included with the agenda materials. Now I'd like to discuss staff's proposed approach to business assistance. Staff reviewed other metro suburbs websites to determine the programs or assistance offered to businesses. We found that cities in Hennepin and Dakota County offer the Open to Business Program. Many cities offer tax increment financing and tax abatement programs. And St. Louis Park also offers a 2% loan program and a revolving loan fund. And a summary of that research was enclosed, enclosed with the agenda. Next slide, please. Staff is proposing to hire Morris Leatherman Company to conduct a survey of about 400 Bloomington businesses. The survey would consist of 50 to 70 questions, would cost about $20,000 and take about three months to complete. Leatherman has conducted surveys for many cities in the metro area, including Bloomington in 2019 for the Parks and Recreation Division. Actually, I'm sorry, it's a department now. Uh, the survey would provide valuable information about the Bloomington business community, including location, size and ownership data. And it will also help staff determine what program or assistance businesses would like to have available from the city. And I'd like to turn it back over to Barb. Thanks, Becky. Um, along with the business survey, staff proposes to establish additional economic development tools the city can provide in order to offer future assistance to our business community, um, not just in response to the pandemic. So staff is proposing to establish a business retention and expansion strategy and also a revolving loan fund as outlined in the staff report. So staff does recommend appropriating money from the city's Strategic Parties Fund to conduct a survey of our business community. And with that, um, Becky and I will stand for questions and discussion.
Mr. President, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hunt.
Question on, on the survey and the selection criteria for the businesses that would receive the survey, what those might be, and have you seen the proposed questions? And then I noticed it was with Eden Prairie, and, and these are verbal or voice oral survey, surveys. The other question with that is, are the businesses told in advance about this, or is how that communicated versus just getting a lot of hangups? So a number of questions in there.
Uh, Mr. President and Commissioner Hunt, so I did speak with, um, Peter Leatherman, um, to talk about how we would perform the survey. Um, I'm trying to remember all of your questions now, but they would do a random survey of businesses, and what he typically does is call the business and set up a time that they would be available to answer all the questions. And he said, when they do that, you know, they, with that random list, um, they only replace that business when they resist. As in, they tell them, you know, we don't have time for this. We don't want to set up a different time to go over this. We're just not interested. Then they would move on to another, um, business on the list. Um, they do offer these calls. They have, um, associates that speak Spanish, Somali and Mung. So if there is, um, a language difference for the business owner, they would be able to set that up when they're, uh, doing their questions. In terms of, um, setting up the questions, that would be the initial phase for this. We would, uh, do some brainstorming with, um, staff and the survey company. I did ask if they have a set of questions that they normally ask. He said they like to sit down and find out from us what we're looking for. They don't want to give us, you know, predetermined questions that would lead us in a certain direction. So they might have examples when we tell them, okay, we want to learn more about the demographics or, you know, that type of thing. But they don't want to give us kind of a standardized list. They want to find out what we're really looking for from the business.
Which makes sense to find out what those, that criteria is and so forth. Any, any thoughts as to size? I mean, so many different sized businesses are we, are, is the thought to go a spectrum of businesses in dollar amount of revenue, proposed thoughts of that or, or size? Any industry segments or a sampling of many, many different categories?
Uh, Mr. President and Commissioner Hunt, um, I think the idea was to just do a random survey, and I did ask about that to make sure that the small businesses would be surveyed, and he said, you know, the majority of businesses in Bloomington are going to be small businesses. It's not real likely to, you know, get all Donaldson and Toro and, you know, those, those larger companies.
So would they constitute, I know some entities constitute small as 10 million in revenue and loss.
We did not get into the specifics of revenue.
Okay.
We could certainly, you know, come back, you know, if the, if the boards would like us to come back with the questions. Uh, we were just going to perform the, you know, the brainstorming with them and get their ideas based on their experience since they've done surveys, you know, with many different cities.
Well, perhaps, perhaps because Commissioner Hunt works so many, much with these businesses, it might be worthwhile to, to, when you, you get something more definitive or he's ready to maybe have, set up a conversation with Commissioner Hunt, because I, I think she brings a wealth of knowledge to that area, and there may be other commissioners or city council members too that would like to, to participate more in that.
Sure, happy to do so.
I see a hand up from Councilmember Alman. Councilmember Alman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I just had, uh, really just one question. Um, and if you're taking names, I'd like to put forward, uh, Sean Nelson for that other piece there, but, uh, my question is, uh, around, uh, survey. Um, would this be in lieu of the, uh, survey that we do for, uh, it's in conjunction with the citizen survey, this business survey? Or will we still do that, uh, that, uh, business survey that's associated with the, uh, citizen survey?
Um, Mayor and Councilmember Alman, I think we would want to make sure that we didn't have a duplicated effort on that. If they're going to continue to, you know, do that survey, um, from community services, we would want to make sure that we're getting, um, information that would be important for whatever program we would bring forward to help businesses in Bloomington.
Mr. Rugi?
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor and, uh, President Erickson, we, we're not planning to do the, uh, NCS Polco Business Survey this year. Uh, so there, there will not be a duplicate effort.
Thanks for the clarification. Uh, this stuff looks pretty good when we're getting started here. Uh, looking forward to seeing this, all this in action.
And if I could just ask a question, if, um, uh, of, uh, Becky, Barbara or Shane, do you envision this to be, I, I'm assuming I have, know this answer, but I'm going to ask, do you envision this to be a program to aid in the retention and assistance of existing businesses? Or the attraction of new businesses or both?
Um, thank you.
Mr. President.
Oh, go ahead, Shane.
Yeah, Mr. President, Mayor and, and, uh, and members, um, Barb, definitely I'll let you speak here in a second, I guess. Um, I, I think a little bit of that depends on what you all want to do, uh, at the mayor and, um, and council and Port Authority level, um, and which programs you guys want to get into. Um, but, you know, we do have a certain amount of activity as, as Barb and Becky laid out tonight with business retention and attraction, and attraction has been mostly for bigger businesses and things like that, but a little bit of a, uh, I don't want to call it trial and error, but with the survey, we'll learn what the existing businesses are looking for, and then we'll come back to the boards, present options and things like that. And so we're going to be, this is just the start of this. It'll be an iterative process. Barb, did you want to add?
Yeah, thanks, Shane, um, Mayor and, uh, Port President and Commissioners. Um, you know, really, we've had many discussions about what are the, the economic tools that we could use to help our business community? And, um, it runs the gamut on what other communities are doing through our research. Um, an Economic Development Call that both Becky and I participate in with Hennepin County and other municipalities. But really, it keeps coming down to, we don't know the challenges that we're trying to create a solution for. And so we really want to hear from the business community what they need from us and what kind of, um, assistance they would need. So in regards to, um, the survey, we could, in, in our proposals for what we want to do after that, um, that will help, um, structure what that, that assistance looks like. And we want to be able to set up something, not just in response to the pandemic, but also future assistance to our business community so that we can continue to support them in coming years.
You know, I, I would like to make a, raise a point. Years ago, at, at Super Value, the Chair of the Board and President, CEO of the company said, you know, it would be great to hear from our retailers and find out what they would like, and for those of you not familiar, Super Value was a large wholesale operation with operations in 20 or 30 states. At any rate, he, he sent a letter to all of our retailers asking them what they thought, comments and things like that, and it was really valuable. There really was a lot of valuable information. So it could be, Mr. Mayor, that this could be something that a letter could go out under your signature or something, just saying, we're, we're undertaking this on behalf. We want to, we want to hear what your concerns are. We'd like to hear what we could do and, and, you know, it, I know we were all just blown away with the, with the kind of input that we got from our retailers. Very thoughtful.
And I agree, Mr. President. I think there's a lot of different possibilities, a lot of opportunities here and, and, uh, I, I just, I like the, the notion of continuing this and building the relationships with the existing businesses in Bloomington. I think, um, the relationships are, are so important, and I know that we, whether it's, uh, just a lack of opportunity, a lack of resources, that it hasn't necessarily been a priority, and I absolutely think it should be. And, uh, on, you know, and, and the flip side, of course, then being attracting new businesses as well and making sure that Bloomington is an attractive place for, for people to do business. And, um, and I mean, I, I, again, my, my two cents, I would love to see at least an examination or a thought toward a business incubator of some kind. Uh, since we've seen some outstanding examples, I, I, in, in Baltimore and in Phoenix on, on different trips with the chamber. Uh, what, uh, business incubators for businesses, large and small, and generally tied to, uh, an educational institution as well. And I think we've got a great opportunity here. We could set ourselves apart in a lot of different ways in terms of how we set up, how we are set up to attract business, to support business, to, to get small businesses launched in conjunction with, uh, our, our, with Normandale, with our other higher level, our other institutions of higher learning, and for that matter, our, our school system, our, our public school system here. So I, I would love to see a lot of different opportunities, a little different ideas here, and I think there's a, a great chance, a great opportunity for, as I said, for Bloomington to set ourselves apart in terms of how we, um, how we interact with and how we deal with our businesses in our community. Council, any additional questions? And if I can't see your hand up, just give a big wave or jump on in.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing for Port Authority Commissioners.
I'm not seeing any hands going, oh, I see. Mr. President, I see Commissioner Hunt with her hand up.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. President and Mr. Mayor, just reiterating a little bit what you said about the Super Value Survey, there, there can be some very good discussions and good ideas. I mean, I, I was talking with a business owner today and I said, what, what do you think would help? Well, reduction in my property tax as well. Okay, how about, let's talk about some other options. So, you know, you could run the gamut of something, hey, um, help me on licensing or fees or something like that. And, and then you could get some really out-of-the-box new ideas, but business owners have gone through, depending on their industry, but such a painful year and, and challenges and, you know, large or small, there's many things that have impacted them along the way. So anything, you know, the day-to-day reality is, um, how can we help them? Um, you know, the theories and all that are great and the hypotheticals, but there's some real needs out there right now. And, and again, I applaud, um, the work that was done and just seeing that list of those businesses, those 290 some, uh, 200 whatever amount of businesses of getting that additional aid. Um, seemingly small amount, but yet that, you know, 10, 15, 30,000 was, um, probably a game changer in the lifeblood for some of those businesses to keep continuing last year. So anything that we can do, um, and, and to publicize that and make it known that that's what we want to hear from business owners. Um, um, how they can be helped along the way. And what ideas they might have is going to be very valuable.
Councilmember Alman, I see your hand up. Councilmember Alman?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not sure if we're ready for action, but I'd be, uh, happy to second a motion from, uh, Councilmember Sean Nelson. I know this is kind of his area of expertise where he, uh, has been pushing real hard for this. Uh, if we're ready for that, I'd be happy to second that. second that.
If there are no further questions from the council side.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I would be prepared to do that. I appreciate that Councilmember Loman. I, like you said, this is very important to me and I think very important to the community. And so I appreciate the work of staff to pull this together and to continue to look. And, you know, I know we're hopefully coming out of this pandemic and, but businesses still have needs and looking at the whole toolbox that we have to support and nurture and recruit and retain, I think is important. This is, this is really good work.
So whoever has controlled the PowerPoint, if you could put up the two proposed motions, just so we get the language correct as we do this, it would be appreciated. There it is. Councilmember Nelson, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I would move to approve staff to conduct a survey of Bloomington's business community with funds appropriated from the city's strategic priorities fund.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember Loman to approve staff to conduct a survey with the, the business community in Bloomington with funds coming from the strategic priorities fund. Counsel, any additional questions, comments? If not, Carolyn, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Ase.
Aye.
Aloga.
Right.
Carter.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Carrie 7-0, thank you.
Thank you.
And then on behalf of the Port Authority, we have a similar motion just to support the city council's approval to direct staff to conduct a survey of Bloomington business community. So I would entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make up.
Go ahead.
Hey, Commissioner Hunt makes the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson, you have a second at that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, Peterson.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Carolyn, do you want to call the roll?
Sure. Erickson?
Aye.
Ase.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Luns, absent. 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both. And look forward to, to moving forward on this. I think it's a, it's an exciting step forward and one that we've, we've talked about a bit. And I think it's, it's a very needed and exciting step forward. So thanks much for your work on this, all of you.
Thank you.
The next item up, it's a, it's an informational item for the Port Authority, and the city council is going to be asked to consider a motion to amend the city's legislative policy to add a couple of provisions to it. This is, I don't think it's a, a repeat of our March second discussion, it's kind of an extension of it with more information that we do have available now. And Mr. Rudling, I think is going to lead us through this. And I think we have some additional folks here to help us work and talk our way through this. So Shane, if you could please take us, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, President Erickson and Port Commissioners. So tonight, we're here to discuss hospitality legislation. We talked about it on March 2nd and on March 22. We're back again on, on April 6 to have the council consider adopting a motion to change legislative policy if they're so inclined. So what we'll do during this item is we'll just do a relatively quick hospitality industry review. We have a guest speaker, so to speak, Brian Carlson, President, CEO of the Commission and Visitors Bureau in Bloomington. We'll talk for a bit and then we'll consider action. So again, you saw some of this information on, on March 2 and another time, but the Bloomington hotels make up about 7% of the city's property tax base. We have 46 or 48 hotels, depending on how you count them, with one under construction right now, and another one that is converting at least part of their rooms to residential. So we'll be about a net, roughly a net zero gain in 2021 for hotel rooms in Bloomington. I've got a slide on that here in a second. So the general fund portion of the levy is about $54 million. Lodging and admissions taxes that go to the general fund are about 10 million. So you can see the large impact, large benefit that lodging and admissions taxes have to the city's budget, to the general fund, and that's $10 million. That doesn't need to be levied onto the property taxpayers in Bloomington in order to provide the services that the city provides. So we're at about 9,700 and change hotel rooms again. One hotel is going to reduce the number of rooms that they have, and another one will come online in 2021, the Hyatt House. And so we'll be hovering right in that neighborhood for, at least for a little while. We don't have any other hotels that are in the pipeline. There have been one or two that have been just some kind of broad rumors about them potentially coming in, even though the hotel industry, of course, is in terrible shape right now. But I expect that we'll be hovering around this number for a while. And I'd be surprised if one of those rumors actually turns into a project, but we'll see. Couple of months of additional data from March 2 on lodging tax data that goes to the general fund. 2019 are the blue bars. That's what we're using as the baseline year. Every year has an anomaly in it. In 2019, we had March Madness here in Minnesota. So there's a blip in March that the revenues are up, but before that it was Super Bowl, and then before that, a couple of years before that, it was Ryder Cup and so on. So a baseline year is kind of hard to come by, but we're using 2019 because it's as good as we've got. Obviously, in 2020, you know, March and April were, of course, terrible, the second half of March in particular. And, you know, things started to get better in Q3 of 2020. And then with, you know, caseload and COVID and restrictions, you know, all through November and December, things were looking pretty bad. What we've seen in January and February is a, is a, is a big uptick. And the March data is, is not formalized yet, but March looks better than February. And so the hotel revenue is coming back, it appears, from this and from traffic at some more other attractions, Mall of America and other things like that, that there is a fair amount of pent up demand, in particular for leisure, leisure travel. Business travel is going to be slower to come back than leisure. And this all relates to the cost of Bloomington services, of course. Again, our general fund levy and our budget is in the range of 50 to 80 million dollars, depending on which number you look at, and the cost of providing those services to the citizens. Bloomington does it efficiently, and we're also helped out by that lodging and admission tax that comes to the city's general fund. Again, another month of data from Smith Travel Research, you can see that hotel occupancy, and this is not rev par revenue per available room or hotel revenue nationally, but it is occupancy, it's almost back to where it was on average pre-pandemic. Unfortunately, the Minneapolis area is usually the loss leader of the top 25 markets. Austin close behind it there. You can see the text at the bottom. But, you know, I think what you'll hear from Bonnie here in a few minutes is that we need to continue to drive people to Minneapolis and St. Paul in this market. And that's going to be a challenging thing moving into the future. I showed this last time as well. It's just an anecdotal data point that, you know, some of the regions of the country are seeing growth and are going to be not as affected by COVID in whatever the, the new normal is after COVID, than regions that have climate challenges, frankly. And we're, of course, in that category. This a lot, you know, the additional lodging tax, of course, allows us to do things that aren't related to lodging tax at all. They allow, they allow us to deliver on our strategic priorities in the city. And, you know, since, you know, especially starting in 2015, mostly due to terrorism and other e-commerce challenges that we were seeing, we started to work harder on diversification of the tax base in Bloomington, in particular with housing, and then also with businesses. But again, the council and port deserve a lot of credit for investing in the Indigo Project because count them down the line for that node in South Loop. Family Rosa Art or Quinn, the Crown Plaza conversion and Roars and the BCS4, and then potentially Park and Go. There's seven or eight projects that are happening in that node. And I think a large part of that has to do with the fact that the Indigo Project proved that people want to live in South Loop. They want to live near the airport. They want to live in Bloomington and near the light rail and so on. So this really set the stage for a lot of these projects, the Indigo Project did. That project's doing well, and these other ones are leasing up. The family is now leasing, and things are going, going well after a, frankly, a slow January. February and March have been doing pretty well. The business development work, we just had a conversation about that, obviously. To date, we focused on retention and attraction of larger businesses, the most recent of which is the SIC project. Of course, keeping that headquarters in Bloomington was super important to the port and council, and they're going to break ground this, this June. And then here's just a clustering of those residential projects in around the light rail and 34th Avenue and American and South Loop. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bonnie, the President and CEO of the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, so you can talk a little bit about the hotel market. Bonnie?
Good evening, Bonnie. Welcome.
Hey, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and President of Port Authority and Port Commissioners. First of all, thank you for inviting me and allowing me to speak on my favorite subject. I should say, those of you that know me, I can talk for a long time about hospitality in our industry, and we have a real passion for it. And so I'm happy to do that. As you all know, and as Shane has just presented, we have had a devastating, COVID has had a devastating impact on particularly the hospitality industry. We have suffered millions of dollars of loss in jobs and so forth. And boy, it really pointed out how, what an economic value this is to our city. We do, in Bloomington, hold the most hotel rooms, I believe in the state of Minnesota. And that's a really great asset to have. We, we promote that a lot at the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau. But I would have to tell you that we have to work a little harder in Minnesota to get people to come to visit. We don't, being centrally located in the United States, it's, it's a gift, but also it's a challenge in comparison to some of the other destinations. So what's happened in Bloomington over the years has been so wonderful with adding the development and the leadership of council, not only all of you in office, but the, the ones before you in the development of the South Loop. There's absolutely no question, it's a very popular place to visit, live, with light rail, airport, certainly the Mall of America is a certainly popular attraction. And, but a destination is made up of a lot of things. And it's made up of a lot of businesses and restaurants. And, and we're proud of that in Bloomington. But let's just say that we do have to work a little harder to have people come and visit us. I think that one thing that, the big reason, and I'm supporting hospitality Minnesota, I am a former board member of the Minnesota Lodging Division. And for those of you that don't know, hospitality Minnesota is made up of three primary organizations. It's certainly the Restaurant Association in Minnesota, Resorts and Hotel Minnesota Lodging. And I have served on the Minnesota Lodging Board for quite a number of years. I just went off the board. But the one thing that, so I am supporting the recovery of that. I think though, with this, where we are today is we really have an opportunity, I'm hoping to reinvest in the destination in whatever form that comes down the road. I think it's important, one of the reasons we have been so successful in Bloomington, again, is the largest industry is hospitality, that development of that, and now attractions and other businesses that people want to visit and come and make, and visit our destination and stay in our hotels. And so the fact that we may want to get a tool in our toolbox, we, that's what we call it when, when we're doing things at the convention bureau, any, any tool that we can get that would promote future development that supports this industry is essential to our future. And so for those reasons, I'm just excited about this opportunity. I know that over at the State Capitol and, and within hospitality Minnesota, as I'm also serve on their legislative committee, there's a real appetite to help our industry. And so I think that I would, it would be in our best interest to, to look to the future and, and as I said, reinvest, take, take the opportunity. What that is down the road, that will be for you to decide. And, but I just think this is a real important time as we move forward. So I'll stop there and take any questions, or if I've missed anything, please let me know.
Counsel, any questions? Bonnie? I do not see any hands waving. Well, I, I just want to say thank you, Bonnie. I thank you and your entire organization. I know it's been a, it's been a rough 12, 14 months for you. I understand that, and I think we all do. And appreciate the work that you have all done in the past. I appreciate the innovative and creative work that your staff is doing now to try and move this forward in this idea forward, but also a number of other creative ideas. And I know that maybe you could share with the group some of the things that, some of the efforts that you've put in, not only with the, the promotion and the, the attractions, but also the, the digital meeting opportunities that you have, have laid out and are working on. I think those are interesting as well. Could, are you able to, to share some information on those quickly?
Mr. Mayor, sure, members of city council? Yes, I'd be happy to. One of the things we've always tried to do at the Bloomington Convention of Visitors Bureau is kind of get ahead of the curve and, and be, thank you, unique, innovative, not to rest on our laurels, but to really take a lead in some of the areas. One program that I know many of the council members and mayor have been to city staff is, was our Bloomington Diamond Service Awards. And what I think, we created that 24 years ago. Of course, we, we were supposed to do our 24th last year in 2020, and we had to pause it, which has been devastating. We were ready to go. The event was happening March 15, and we decided to cancel it on March 11. So sadly, it's not going to happen in '21, but we hope to bring it back in '22. But why this is so important is because this program honors the, the men and the women who work in our industry from all facets of life. It gets their Academy Awards. It's those people, we have always believed that where the rubber meets the road, they're the ones that service the guest. And so it's become, it's one of the only one of its kind in the United States. So we're very proud of that. So again, innovation. As far as the meetings and events industry, what we have rolled out is, we try to cluster hotels together so that if it's a larger meeting than one hotel could handle, we've had success with hotels working together. So on the east end of the strip, it would be the Doubletree and the Sheraton. I'm sorry, on the west end. On the east end, we could do anything from the Hilton and the Embassy, or one of the things that we did was at the Mall of America. And what we created was with the JW Marriott and the Radisson Blue Hotel, and what we are calling it is under one roof, so that a person could, a company could come and have a meeting, use some of the meeting space at Mall of America, have their guests enjoy all the wonderful things that happen at Mall of America. And so that has, has also been very successful. Now we find ourselves in a situation of what to do about this hybrid meeting, much with the digital aspect, which I think, Mr. Mayor, you're referring to. We have had some groups come in, and our Hyatt Hotel had a very successful meeting by offering the virtual package as well as important, you know, in-person attendance. Later this week, I have been asked to emcee a, a meeting. a meeting with it's going to happen. Sadly, it's not in Bloomington. It's in the hotel up by the Vikings Sports Complex, the New Omni. But it's the Meeting Professional International, the Minnesota Chapter. It's Global Meeting and Event Day on Thursday. And so every major association is part of this. I've been asked to emcee a meeting. There will be about 110 people in person. And there will be also a large virtual audience to be able to patch in on that. This is something that is is tasking all of us because, you know, how do you do this effectively? Eventually, there's going to have to be a cost and it goes on and on. But we are, our hotels now are offering it. The other thing we did that I want to mention is in 2019, we launched a program for our hotels and attractions. It is a 360, it's called 360, threshold 360. And what it is, is we we implemented it on our website so that anybody can come and take a look at a hotel digitally, take a look at the meeting space, look at their facilities, so forth. I can't tell you what a lifesaver that would be to us in 2020. It was the most popular thing that was being used in 19, but today it's really helped us communicate all the wonderful things on our space. So again, we have lots of programs that we're looking at. It has been a big challenge this last year, for sure. I hope that answers what you were thinking.
It does. Thank you so very much for that. I see Councilmember Nelson had his hand up. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Bonnie, for taking the time. I appreciate our conversation and appreciate you coming here to chat with us a little bit. Just a couple of quick questions. We obviously had some basic information that Minneapolis area, the Bloomington area, St. Paul area, the hospitality industry in our region has been hurting, especially in comparison to some of the national trends. And what I'm just wondering is if you can provide a little bit of additional context to that. You know, where are we at in terms of bookings during the week, on the weekend? You know, I think there's an idea that leisure travel is coming back, business travel is not. Can you talk to that? How has the spring break timeframe been? We've got, I mean, we talked about lodging and admissions. We've got, you know, kind of both of those. Obviously, in some of the areas, there's some severe restrictions on capacity due to the pandemic and just to keep everyone safe and healthy. So could you, I guess, to shorten my question, could you provide just a little bit more detail and context to what's happening locally within the hospitality industry, just to help us sort of understand where the greatest need is right now?
Great. Yes, Councilmember Nelson and members of the council and Mr. Mayor. So for the last year and a half, we we at the Bureau always work with Smith Travel Research. We get monthly reports on occupancy. When the pandemic hit, we immediately pivoted and we asked them to, we enlisted them to do weekly occupancies. And so we've been doing that now for since, well, since last April. And what we're seeing today, you are absolutely right, Councilmember Nelson, is that leisure, there's a great pent-up demand for travel. And leisure is now leading not only our Bloomington Hotels, but the nation as far as people, that's where the occupancy is building. This last week, we had a, so it'd be a week ago, we're always a week behind. It's about 48% occupancy, which I never thought that would be something to get excited about, but we are very excited about that. And it is primarily leisure. What we are seeing, however, business travel, that the jury's still out on that. I have a personal belief that business travel will be back sooner than what is predicted, but that remains to be seen. It depends on a lot of things. We are seeing some, excuse me, some meetings and conventions booked in the third and fourth quarter and into early 22. The other thing we've been excited about, you know, I haven't talked about the amateur sports market. We are well positioned in Bloomington to with the amateur sports market. They love staying in our hotels. This could be amateur hockey, basketball. I wish we had a facility of some sort, but people who come to town for these sporting events, they love to stay in our hotels. They feel safe. And of course, they love the Mall of America. This is very important. And we just booked, it's called One Hockey. It's an international hockey event that will be in October of 21 and January of 22. So they're feeling very optimistic that some of these international teams will come. It's a minor league. And we just did a press release on that. And so we're very excited about that. In coming up now in the summer months, we do have some amateur sports. We have some tournaments that are coming in that we that we have worked with for years. So so the point being is there's some sentiment that this travel now, people are feeling better about traveling and that it will start to pick up. So it just remains to be seen, but definitely leisure is leading the way. And we need more of that. So.
Thank you for that context. I appreciate it. In terms of what we're looking at tonight, are there any specific proposals, ideas, things like that? I mean, there's a request for some additional flexibility and supporting legislation that would allow that. Can you give us any context on what the hospitality industry is is looking for? Or is this at this point, just hey, we'd like all the tools we possibly can have? And we will figure some of those details out as we go forward?
Right. Councilmember Nelson, yes. I have a lot of ideas, as you can well imagine, and a long wish list. But that being said, I would say yes to both parts of that question. First of all, as far as going for any flexibility in legislative, you know, and funding and and all of the things that the tools that that the city uses when when we embark on some development. Absolutely. Boy, if there's an opportunity to dedicate that to hospitality and businesses that support that, I would, you know, 150%, it's it's an opportunity to for us to do that. What that actually is used for? Yes, I have several ideas down the road, but I would say it's it's really important for us. What I hear from our hotels, you know, they they'll always get nervous when they hear that another hotel is going to be built. They always think that perhaps it's going to take their business. But, you know, the market really, in normal times, takes care of that. What I hear is we need things that draw people. We need attractions. We need those kinds of popular things that people travel to go and see. I mean, right now, we're, we talked about occupancy. We are experiencing a little uptick in occupancy and a lot of that is spring break. Spring bake in March and it kind of went into early April. And we've always said, you know, not everyone can afford to go away to Disneyland for a week or two vacation. And so they have a staycation or they come to our area. It's easy to get around. We have the Mall of America is a huge draw for, well, not only for Bloomington, for the state and for the region. And so we can create this destination experience. So but as far as specific projects, anything that complements the development in the South Loop. I think that certainly we'd love, we'd look at any kind of amateur sports arena. There was a lot of excitement, I know, nationwide, because we talked about it for a long time, about the water park. I don't know where that stands, but anything that draws more people that can support our industry is really important. And I think a wonderful opportunity to reinvest in the destination.
Thank you. I think probably my last question here is you see that the travel is coming back quicker than the business travel. And so what I'm trying to get my head around is if it makes sense to look at and focus on attractions and things that target that leisure travel, if it's coming back quicker or if there's more of a need to look at things that support and assist on that business hospitality side of things. And if there's ways to do that. So that I guess that that's one question is, you know, how would that get balanced out? My my last question is just, you know, how would we look at this in terms of assisting those individuals that work within this industry? There's a lot of people employed in the hospitality industry that have been extremely hard hit by this. And how do we make sure that if we're looking at some type of hospitality assistance that 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 goes hand in hand with helping the people of the industry, the people that deliver that service and take care of the hotels and the rooms and the food service and and all of those aspects of hospitality?
Right. Councilmember Nelson, I think that definitely I have to say that leisure is is a very, very important part of a hotel's business because it can come on the weekends. And they really like that. It is it is the leader coming back from this as the recovery, people are saying, and and we believe that as well. The business traveler, you know, that corporate traveler, I do think that the market will take care of itself on that. But we do get business travelers that bring their families and then they have extended vacations. You'll see that in a lot of destinations. We know that that happens and also promote it. We are working on a piece of business right now. I'm I'm not sure if I can say who it is, but it will definitely be family travel. And we're, we're just waiting for the contract and so and it's in the South Loop area. So yes, very much so. I think one of the ways to help our employees and the hospitality industry is to get business coming back, to create excitement, reinvest in the destination. Then the jobs and the people will get back to work. It will help them. You know, they, look, I think that people want to work and I think they want that, you know, that job and our hotels. And I think the market will take care of that from a wage standpoint, you know, the supply and demand factor. And so let's, you know, reinvesting, building things, getting this travel back is is for sure. How we can best help our hotels from a long-term perspective, you know, I'm sure if you ask them, everybody would say we need money and, you know, this type of thing. But this is really an important part. Hospitality Minnesota, I know on their platform, they're asking for some delay in some of the property tax PPP forgiveness, some of the things that the hotels and restaurants have, you know, gone for and and so those things are really extremely helpful from the federal part, federal aid.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Council, additional questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coulter with his hand up, President Erickson. But I will defer to you, Mr. President, if if you have a comment or question.
Well, no, I it's more of a comment. I just having been involved with this since, well, we we built our house in Bloomington in 1980 and I'll share a little story that I think kind of encapsulates this whole thing. Jim Lindell lives in our, lived on our block at that time and we had a progressive dinner party on New Year's Eve and I met Jim and I was saying, Jim, it's pretty too bad Bloomington lost the stadium. And he said, oh, Bob, it's this great opportunity. And the city proceeded with the city council's support and that to take a lot of risk. We bought the property, we own the property, there was litigation, there was a lot of different things. But I think the whole point is this whole thing that has occurred was a very deliberate action on the part of the city to invest and invest smartly and and do it with limitations and make sure that that the investment by the private sector was was much more than the investment by the public sector. But I think as we get into this context, it's sometimes helpful to think that that in Bloomington, this has been a very deliberate effort over many, many years, which has paid huge dividends to the city, both in in terms of probably being the envy in the metro area for the liquor and lodging tax that we get, although when it goes down, obviously we're impacted, but that's been plus revenue for the city for for many, many years. So I think as we look into this, you you won't survive, we can't survive in the future unless we continue to have this interactive relationship and do it on a smart basis. And and so I think to the extent that there are tools that are available that can be gotten. And that's only a plus. And obviously, anything that's going to be used has to come back to the the city council and the city council wants and the Port Authority also, but whatever. But I think it's just helpful to think that these things were not an accident. There were a lot of hard work over many, many years.
Mr.
Bonnie? Bonnie?
I just wanted to follow up with President Erickson's comment. I don't want to date myself, but I will tell you that I was there when the mall was built and when those presentations and those and all the city council members that came after that. And President Erickson is so right about that. I often brag about our city and their professionalism and their vision and leadership in developing, making the hospitality industry the number one industry, the development, bringing the Mall of America, not just doing, you know, a lot of black stores and so forth. And so I see this time now, we're at another opportunity at crossroads where we could, you know, invest in something more wonderful. And so I I just, I'm very proud of the work that all of you have done over the years. And so I just wanted to make that comment.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I I just really wanted to echo, and you'll have to excuse me, I my, I suspect, like many of you, my allergies are wreaking havoc with with my nose at the moment. But I just, first of all, just really wanted to echo the comments that that Councilmember Nelson made about the the workers and the employees within the hospitality industry. I think you know, so often, I I don't think it's intentional, but I I think sometimes we just kind of take for granted that the work that we do will support them. And I I think we we just sort of echo what President Eric said, Erickson said, excuse me, that we need to be very intentional about supporting them as well, that that a lot of these folks are the ones who have been in hardest over the last year. And so I I do hope that we're going to be very intentional about about supporting workers. But the question I had, and I'm not sure it maybe Bonnie or Shane, if either of you, which one of you might be better to address this, but you know, looking at the packet here, we, you know, I I see, you know, when we, and maybe I'm just getting ahead of our discussion here. But I'm I'm curious about how you define resiliency, because I I think that that kind of gets at sort of the key point of this discussion here, because you know, you, it it references providing long-term resiliency to the industry by continuing to drive heads and bets, referring to hotels, of course. And I guess my my concern is to me that that sounds a little bit like we're like the the focus or the idea is driving, you know, demand in hotels for its own sake. Right? That that we're just, you know, we're bringing people in to stay in hotels. And I think part of the the conversation that that Bonnie, that you and I had, is that it needs to be a much broader conversation than than just that. And so my, I'm, my, I'm a little hesitant because I'm I'm worried that we're just going to be doing more of the same things that we've been doing rather than you know, thinking boldly, thinking differently about what we can do. So I'm wondering if, I don't know, Bonnie or Shane, if you could speak to that intent a little bit and and kind of what the thought is behind that?
Well, Councilmember Coulter, if I'll say certainly a destination experience is encompasses a lot of different things. When a tourist comes to town, they spend dollars in many places, whether it's a restaurant, a gas station, a convenience store, a unique business or or whatever. But it is true that that we want our hotels healthy with visitors because that keeps people employed. And and as you said, And and as you said, this is a very important thing to consider. As far as future development, what I do know going on, there are destinations that are investing right now. For example, I know that we our colleagues in Fort Worth, Texas, we just talked to them. They're in the process of embarking on a $50 million sports complex. And it is it has retail and other businesses around it, those infrastructures, you know, are growing. Denver just has taken this opportunity to expand their convention center. And and so in a downturn like this, there also becomes new opportunity. And so the vision and leadership, I think, determining what that is and what best fits. I'm going to always advocate for hospitality and the jobs and and our hotels. But a visitor does actually do draw, you know, their money transfers in a lot of different ways. So that's how I see it. But anyway.
Shane, anything to add?
Mr. Mayor and yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, President and members. Councilmember Coulter, so I I think, you know, a couple of things. Certainly, we don't want to bring people to Bloomington and have them stay in hotels just for the sake of them staying in hotels. I think, as outlined earlier, you know, the benefit to the general fund so that the city can pursue its strategic priorities is huge. And if we continue to add hotels in Bloomington and drive that number up, it allows you to do more strategic priorities through the budgeting process. I think that what COVID has showed us is that you need to be cognizant of that number. But I think the council should think about, you know, the benefit of of that money and what it allows you to do. So many cities would love to have that revenue stream so that they can do so many things that Bloomington is able to do that that other cities can't. So it's not, I don't think, just more of the same. You know, we've been studying a lot of different ideas for the past number of years, be it from Expo to Water Park to Space Shuttle to Event Center, as Bonnie said, minor league sports. So, you know, all of those types of things are on the table. And if if, you know, I certainly would rank those in the innovative category. I think what the council and Port Authority have done over the past five years or so is to make sure that we don't want just another select service hotel in town because we could have easily five or 10 more of those. If we didn't buy the Ramada Thunderbird Hotel, there would be a number of select service hotels and a couple of small restaurants there. The council and Port Authority and staff have thought more boldly about that. The same thing is true about the Six Site. The only interest that we were getting when we were marketing the Six Site out in the open market was for select service hotels. I think it's very feasible that we could have another thousand hotel rooms in Bloomington if we wanted to, but they'd all be 150 room select service hotels. And so we've continued to try to do things bigger, better and different, and presented that to the council and Port Authority, and and the council to date has supported that. And and, you know, if we want to consider on continue on that path, we can. Otherwise, we can change course, of course. As it relates to resiliency, I guess the way that I look at that is, again, to continue to diversify the offering in Bloomington from a lot of different perspectives. You know, back in 2015, we really took a look at that, and I think we've made strides in that. Again, we could be pigeonholed in the select service hotel with the design life of those hotels of 20 years and then have to tear them down, it seems like. We've looked to diversify our hotel stock as well as just the land use type in general by adding residential, working on big businesses and things like that. Resiliency in my mind means diversity, and that's diversity in the drivers of hotel rooms to provide things just beyond Mall of America. It's hard to drive business use besides things like Sick, for example, not to keep bringing that up, but they're super excited about being next door to a bunch of hotels. They're an international company, so, you know, people come and visit their facilities, stay in a hotel that's right next door. There's a number of good operators right there. There's Hazelwood, et cetera. And so that brings in the business traveler when when they come back outside of outside of COVID. And so hopefully I've answered your questions. If not, I'm happy to go back and hit on anything else.
No, I I think that was really helpful. And I I think it was it was really important for all of us and and for the, you know, the folks watching at home to hear that too, because I think that that we we just need to be clear, sort of, you know, what to what end are we are we pursuing this? What is what is the ultimate goal? And and I think you articulated it very well. And I I think that is the 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 proper course as as you've outlined it there. I just wanted to be clear that that we were on the same page as far as that understanding. So thank you.
Additional questions? Give a wave? If not, one of the issues when we talked about this in the past, I think, was a questioning and maybe a concern about the lack of specifics, exactly what were we talking about here? When we talked about changing the legislative agenda, what exactly did we mean? And one of the things that we're going to be considering tonight is whether or not to support the Hospitality Minnesota letter to the governor, they're basically their legislative outline. And I think to understand that a little bit better and to maybe go through that and ask some questions and chew that apart a little bit. Shane, if you could, I think I saw the the slide up earlier. If you could maybe put that up and we could kind of take apart what Hospitality Minnesota has brought forward as a possibility, and then we can have that discussion as to how it applies here in Bloomington and whether or not this is something that we want to take a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. President and Port Authority Commissioners. So on the screen, you should be able to see the legislative policy, so to speak, from Hospitality Minnesota that they that they issued to the governor. It continues to evolve. I spoke with Ben over there, who is their government relations head. And they're hopeful that a number of these things will make it through the legislative process. Of course, nobody knows what the end of the session will look like in May, but this is what they're pushing. And I think, you know, each one of these has their own merits and is targeted targeted at a different thing. And I know Bonnie's been engaged with Hospitality Minnesota as well. So a number of them already have bills that are moving through. You can see the House and Senate file numbers there. But PPP tax free, that's the federal conformance conformity. Property taxes, everybody would love to not pay property taxes. Everybody likes what taxes do, but nobody wants to pay them. I put myself in that category personally. No interest loan assistance, just, you know, again, this is financial assistance for, you know, the near term COVID impacts to the hotel business workforce, Pro Start and Hospitality Tourism Management High School workforce programs. Bonnie may know more about that than I do, and I'll give her an opportunity to speak here in just a second. Sales tax on equipment, I think that's pretty self explanatory. And then, you know, the American Rescue Rescue Plan, the 1.9 trillion dollar bill that was just passed. You know, lots of folks are are looking to that for funding. And certainly Hospitality Minnesota sees an opportunity there for assistance to their businesses. Bonnie, did you want to add anything else on to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, the only thing I can say on the workforce, this is a program that Hospitality Minnesota has had for many years, and it was just really growing, starting to get stronger. Grants to people that are in hospitality management school and so forth. There's a there's a foundation, the workforce. All of us, we're always taking a look at the workforce. How can we really persuade more people to come into the hospitality business? I think a lot of people thought that it is a, you know, a part time job or something you did as you went through school, so, which is not the case. And so this this Pro Start has been a real good tool for them. And because this is statewide agenda, so a lot of support, whether you're in northern Minnesota or in Bloomington. So but generally, and and they're they do a good job. So that's all I have to add to that.
Any questions on this? Councilmember Nelson, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question, and and I don't know if anybody would know the answer to it. But along the lines of trying to support the business and the employees that work in the business, has there been any consideration of a a break or a time period in which the business didn't have to pay unemployment taxes? The obviously, the employee would still be eligible for unemployment. I'm not suggesting that. But that is an expense to businesses that would help them bring people back quicker because it would reduce that payroll expense for the company and trying to sort of combine those two aspects to to benefit as broadly as possible.
Councilmember Nelson, I am not sure of the answer of that. So I could certainly find out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the only thing that rings a bell that's not exactly what you're you're asking about, but is related in some ways to that is a bill that was authored in a press release or, excuse me, a press conference that our own Representative Andrew Carlson had probably five or six weeks ago that related to the jobs that these folks have, if they've been laid off, that their place would be held, basically, so that they can get that same job back so that people have some job security in that situation. But I know that's not exactly what you're talking about, but in the same vicinity.
Thank you. I didn't expect that maybe the specific answers would be there, but just just trying to connect those two things again.
Additional questions? And I just wanted to clarify, and I was going to ask the question, and I should know the answer to this, but the the notion of the property tax where it says exempts hospitality businesses from the state property tax levy for two years. And can can you clarify that a bit? I mean, I does the state have a property tax levy? Or I think property tax levy is a local level thing. And would that mean city and county property tax levy? Or are we talking state business taxes? What what exactly does that property tax bullet there mean?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers and Board Authority, so I can do some more research on this. But the way I read this is that it would, and maybe the terminology that's used here is is imprecise. But, you know, as you know, the on on non residential taxes, there's fiscal disparities, about 30 or 40% in the metro. And then state, county, schools is roughly a third, a third, a third of that, a third, a third, a third of a third, so in the in the low teens. And then the state general property tax is roughly a thirdish of property taxes on a hotel. And so my recollection is that this relates to the state's portion of someone's property tax and not the city county school or the FD portion. But we will clarify that if that is not true.
Yeah, I would appreciate clarification on that because that would be that would be a significant hole in our budget without property tax levy for two years from our hospitality industry businesses.
I agree.
Any additional questions? So Shane, from a practicality standpoint, I mean, here we are, we're we're past the Easter break. We're in the first week of of April, headed to the second week pretty quickly here. And this is a this is a major, there's a lot of big stuff here for legislators to consider. Just practically speaking, could this get done? As if we if we endorse this, if we took this on, if we added this to our legislative policy, what what's the likelihood that any or all of this would be be part of of a hospitality relief bill at the Capitol in the next six weeks?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers and Port Authority, yeah, it's late in the session for sure. Be it this legislative policy, A, bullet, the Hospitality Minnesota platform, or the other flexibility, which I'm happy to talk about here next, if you'd like. They're they're both late in the session. The House and Senate are creating their tax bills today. That said, and and they both have rules about deadlines and things like that, that they can also amend those rules. So it's certainly not impossible for Hospitality Minnesota to move these things forward. Certainly, the the bills that have already been introduced and heard have a lot more likelihood. But things that haven't been introduced and heard are are much less likely to move. But it isn't it isn't impossible for things to be introduced later. There's lots of ways that a bill can become a law in the next six weeks.
Thank you. Then you mentioned also this this being legislative policy A, and there's a legislative policy B as well. And maybe you could run us through that quickly.
Happy to. So on March 22, the council passed a motion on these bullet points to help the hospitality that we would not simply monitor the hospitality legislation, but we would look to support hospitality legislation that helps the industry minimize its private single entity benefit that's temporary, COVID related, that helps the whole city, that's led by someone else, CCBB preferred. And then there was a discussion between, you know, are we talking about the COVID downturn bridge, so to speak, through when business returns to whatever the new normal will be versus long term hospitality stability or resiliency or or however we want to talk about that. So since then, staff tried to bake that into this B item, so funding flexibility. And one of the things that's been discussed some is the 2011 legislation, which was Tiff Flexibility, which did become law, and it was frankly, a direct subsidy option for cities. They could give money directly to projects. Bloomington did not activate that and didn't use that 2011 legislation, but other cities did. But there is legislation that's modeled after that, that's seen some discussion. So these financing tools are likely to be introduced even yet late this session. They're not specific to any particular project or city, and they are flexibility using existing dollars and not new money from any new revenue stream resource. And so, yeah, the council can consider changing their legislative policy to add A, which is the support for Hospitality Minnesota's platform that we just spoke about. And they can also consider B and or B, which is the funding flexibility for local units of government like Bloomington to build and or facilitate projects that drive hospitality demand in the future that are supported by the hospitality stakeholders, help a broad portion of the industry and minimize private single entity benefits. So that attempt on B is is the work that we did to try to move the action from the council on March 22 into what was considered on March 2. So with that, be happy to answer any other questions that the council and port have.
Any questions? I see Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question, actually, but just to to follow up on the question that you asked. I looked up this, the the property tax levy exemption, and it does refer to the statewide property tax levy that's on commercial, industrial and seasonal residential property. So it's not it's not local property tax levies.
Thank you. It's always good to have somebody who knows their way around the 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 laws, websites, the the legislation, the bills offered websites. I appreciate that. Councilmember Carter?
Good, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Carlson, for being here tonight. I really appreciate hearing your perspective and 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 hearing from somebody who has deep expertise in this area and a long history in Bloomington. So I really appreciate you being here tonight. I just had more kind of out of curiosity, Shane, when you mentioned that 2011 legislation and that other cities took advantage of that, but Bloomington didn't, what were the types of projects that they were able to accomplish? And I know for our our purposes, it would probably look different in Bloomington because we have different goals. But I'm just curious what that can look like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter. So the don't have the information with us here tonight about which projects were funded. We'd have to do some digging on that to find specific projects with the USA to to find that out. The legislation itself gave broad flexibility to cities to support businesses how they saw fit. And it was temporary in nature based on the recession that was, you know, And uh it was temporary in nature based on the recession that was, you know, the recession that formally happened in two thousand and eight, but economic downturn that ensued. Um, the projects that Bloomington was pursuing at the time, um uh Radisson Blue was really the out, the or what we were working on, and it was, you know, one of the biggest hotels and still is one of the biggest hotels in the metro, um closed in in May of two thousand and ten, opened a year and a half later and really came into an industry that was um thriving. You know, you build in the downturn and open in the good times, which is couldn't have timed it better um for for that project. So um that one was assisted by a different type of um funding flexibility that recovery zone facility bonds, recovery zone facility bonds out of the um two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine Obama stimulus package, actually. And so um, but uh to answer your question, we'd be happy to give you more information on that, but um we don't have it here tonight.
Thank you. And am I understanding you correctly? You said that um that there is legislation um similar to the two thousand legislation that's being being dra- or has been introduced? Is that what you said?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, there's been some drafts that have um been floating around, but they have not been introduced yet.
Okay, got it. Um, and in those drafts, are there specific um uh specific cri- assume there's specific criteria that needs to be met by the project um to qualify for those public benefits or um that would be required? Uh, so I'm thinking, you know, like that they provide living wage jobs or things like that. Like, are there specific criteria associated with the use of the public dollars for a private use?
Sure. Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and Councilmember Carter, so the two thousand and thir- or eleven legislation was again very broad and nonspecific. It did not include those types of um uh that type of language. And so um could that be done? Um, certainly yes. Um, and whether the cities uh that did use that two thousand and thir- eleven legislation required those types of things, they certainly could. And again, with the with the council and Port Authority tonight, um, you know, should any project move forward out of any legislation that's passed out of uh the two thousand well, any legislative session for that matter, of course, would be come before the council and the council could put whatever restrictions they wanted on any use of any funds. So um, again, to use the analogy of a tool um in the toolbox, that's what, you know, could happen this this session. But again, it's late in the session and who knows if legislation will be passed, who knows if there'll be a tax bill. People think there probably will be a tax bill this year, but you never know. Um, but again, the council and Port Authority can decide if and how they want to use the tool, and if they want to add additional restrictions on the use of that tool, that's certainly something that that you all have the power to do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um in terms of the things that Hospitality Minnesota is advocating for, I think, Mayor, you had asked about the sales tax one, but would any of the other ones, the PPP tax forgiveness, the sales tax, any of those items, would they have any budgetary impact on the city of Bloomington?
Um, Mr. Mayor and uh councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, so going around the hub and spoke here here, um the PPP loan forgiveness, I'd say no. Um, we just clarified that the the state property tax one should not have any impact on us. Um, no interest loan assistance, um, no direct impact workforce. Um, I can't see any impacts there, and we don't have a um sales tax on um general equipment in Bloomington. So sort of uh the city, um, you know, doing a local option sales tax, uh, there would be no impact there. And the ARP funds, um, our our federal funds and again, um, sort of, you know, reducing the pot that would be available for who knows what, you know, four ninety-four improvements or something like that. It's no direct impact. So going around the hub, I I don't see any impacts, new city budgets for any of those things.
Good. Um, just as legislation moves forward, that would be my only concern is just keep an eye on that. Um, but it seems like the state is trying to take responsibility for absorbing uh that in terms of the assistance for hospitality, which I think is the right approach. Um, in terms of the other part of this, the flexibility um and utilizing, I think there's two components, the hospitality and admissions tax as well as the um TIF, would the TIF still have certain requirements related to uh public purpose or public benefit? And would it have to meet that uh the normal but-for test that it wouldn't happen? But for the assistance of the city, would those types of uh tests still apply to anything that we did? Uh, and I know maybe there isn't legislation, but do based on the past and based on what you've seen, do you think those would still be in place?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, um, we did lose Julie Eddington, would be the perfect person to answer that question. Um, she did have another meeting that she had to attend virtually here a little while ago. I'm not sure um if the city attorney can answer that. I will make an attempt and then I'll I'll hand it over to Melissa. Um, but um generally speaking, again, in the two thousand legislation was was pretty broad, and if that's what ends up um moving forward and ends up ultimately being passed, again, it gives the city very broad authority to to do those types of things. Again, the city can put whatever restrictions it wants um through the use of that that money. It doesn't limit the city's ability to do any of that. And so um again, it's up to you how how you want to use the tool if the tool is in place. But um yeah, Melissa, did you have anything to add on to that?
Does Mander shade anything to add?
Mayor members, uh, I don't have the language immediately in front of me, but I'm happy to be happy to pull it together and and provide a more thorough response in consultation with Julie tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Uh, my last question on that is, you know, um, and I think I'll probably get the same or similar answer that it's a very broad authority and all that, but just wondering if there's any parameters that you see that are being looked at in terms of what is support for the hospitality industry? And and one of the things in my mind that um uh you had brought up, Shane, was the um uh SIC investment within our community and the work that you've done that to keep them here in our community. And you mentioned that one of the things that they really like as a business are all those hotels and that they can as an international company, they can have their meetings. It's very convenient to come into our airport right next door, have places to stay, have places for dinner, have places for meeting, all of that. We talked about the impact on business travel. And so would, within the flexibility in your mind, would support for diversifying the industry within the South Loop District fit within what you're seeing from that legislation?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilman Nelson, so you you you're right, Councilman Nelson, that the city could use the tool if that's the tool, um however they wanted to and um stipulate that it's used for that type of diversity that you're looking for. But um, yeah, I mean, we talked to lots of businesses, SIC is the freshest, you know, in the mind, just because we're in constant uh communication with them right now and have been for a while, but especially as they're working through the entitlement process that you know, the amenities in South Loop are are a huge benefit. And um, you know, being three three minutes from the airport and staying in a hotel and then walking over to SIC for a meeting is one of the reasons why they wanted to be there and and not um in some other location in the metro or even in the location that they're in right now, which is still in Bloomington, but it's a good fifteen minutes from the airport a lot down on driving down East Old um West Old Cheltenham Road. And so
Number one is to be in district too, Shane. We get it.
No, but I I think um, you know, we we're we're talking to a number of of businesses that are looking to locate in that area, and they they see those benefits, um um be it, you know, the grocery store or um you know, residential uses, but also just businesses that that want to be in that area for one reason or another. And um the more businesses you have there, the more amenities you'll get, the more residents you have there, the more amenities you'll get, the grocery store. You know, that, if we can get that done over at Bloomington Central Station, that will just help all those people that live over there, and it also helps hotel rooms and also helps the businesses and so on and so forth. And so, you know, that was the goal of the South of District Plan was to create this, you know, community and build on what we already had there and use the infrastructure that was in place. And I think what you're seeing now, as I'm sure President Erickson would love to talk about, which he does often about, you know, the long-term vision, and it's finally getting to a point where you're starting to see a critical mass in there and things that are outside the mall. Yes, the mall is a huge anchor. It's the reason we have light rail and drive lots of hotel rooms, but we've been working since, you know, well, for a long time to make South Loop, you know, more than the more than the mall and different than the mall, and we to continue to uh continue on that work.
Great. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
I see Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Loman. I do want to uh, I I don't want to have our councilmembers donate the or dominate the conversation here. If any of the Port Authority members want to speak up, please do um give a shout and make sure you're you're heard. I'm just uh calling on the folks who've got their hands up and here and now. Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, and I guess this this might be more kind of general as to the broader conversations that are happening up at the Capitol. If we were to move forward with B here, obviously, this this seems like a a pretty powerful tool, uh tool to support the hospitality industry. Um, I I I'm just curious, considering that hospitality, again, obviously extends well beyond South Loop and and throughout our community, are there any conversations at the legislature or or would we be encouraging any conversations um to expand the the expand TIF districts, expand the scope of pooled TIF? Um, do things like remove geographic fencing around some of the funds that we have that are currently tied in South Loop, things like SLDF? And I obviously, this is a a citywide industry that uh is hurting all over. Uh, and if we're going to be pursuing flexibility here, how can we best use this tool uh to greatest effect in a lot of neighborhoods that really need it? Are those conversations happening?
Mr. Mayor, um, councilmembers and Councilmember Martin, so I think that's that's definitely a conversation that um that we will have to have with the various stakeholders in South Loop, um, be it the broader use of the South Loop Development Fund money that like our lodging tax or the geo fencing um and statute for the TIF funds. Um, you know, the the largest balance we have for sure is the TIF districts uh that are drive from the Mall of America. Um, that's by far the biggest balance that we have. And so they would have to be part of that conversation because that money is is part of the development agreement that was approved in two thousand and sixteen. And so um, that conversation is not happening in a robust way right now. Um, Mall of America is aware of that. We've talked to them about that. Um, and so if that's something that the council wants to take up in their legislative policy and and move that um either now or in the future, we we definitely can do that. And staff, of course, will do what the council wants to do, but that's not currently part of this, or at least that's hasn't been part of the conversation to date.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, you know, as I'm listening to the the conversation and I'm kind of looking at, you know, our our conversation, uh, Mayor, um, uh, March twenty-second, the six things we put down, um, I wonder if we want to be a little more explicit um around uh this idea of uh directly seeking to support uh employees. Um, when we look at the legislation, I wonder if we want to look to add a you know, a item number seven there. I know we we've talked about that and it's kind of implied, but do we want to, you know, you know, write that out and add that? Uh, uh, you know, to that uh that piece. I know that some of this legislation does help, and I'm hearing the rest of my colleagues, and that kind of resonates with me, Mayor. Uh, uh, does it make sense to to add something to that to that degree that would, you know, let let folks know that as we go to the legislature that we're also seeking to make sure that we're uh supporting our employees directly? Uh, that that tradition that we have with the, you know, as Bonnie, you've talked about our Diamond Service Awards, that's one example of the many things that we do do. Um, but uh maybe we want to be a little more explicit with that. What do you think, Mayor?
No, I think that makes sense. I think to to state that explicitly within a a legislative policy document, I think it it makes it clear that where our priorities are and what we hope to accomplish. Um, you know, the next steps of then of having it rolled into legislation, having it legislation that's ultimately passed and and signed into law, it it's a it's a process, but I think to make that statement within the city of Bloomington's um policies and priorities, I think it 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 makes sense and it could be a powerful, a powerful statement as we move forward with this.
So then just um, you know, as we're trying to, you know, move this forward here uh with this A and B, um uh, you know, I I'm just one, I'm curious, you know, Mayor, kind of where you where how you're looking at both items A and B and what some of my other colleagues are looking at this. Um, I I really think there's some advantageous things uh that we could really do with this uh with this A and B uh for the community and really for the, you know, our hospitality industry. Um, uh, I I'm just curious what other port members do think as well. Um, uh, I I just, I want to sit back and listen and hear what folks have to say.
No, and and I was going to jump in. I want to make sure people had an opportunity to ask questions and get clarification first, but uh uh, agree, I mean, if we want to start um moving forward with this a bit, I I mean, looking at the two, looking at the A and the B in um separately, I think uh for the A, for to 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 look at what Hospitality Minnesota has brought forward, what their goals are, what they're hoping to accomplish to revive the entire hospitality industry in the state of Minnesota. I think if Bloomington was not part of that, I think it would it would be very obvious and it would stick out like a sore thumb. Bloomington is hospitality in the state of Minnesota. Yes, there's a a great, a number of great spots, whether it's the North Shore or the or the cities or uh the Lakes area. I mean, obviously, there's so many great hospitality and tourism areas in Minnesota. But when I travel across the country, when I talk to people from other communities, other states, other other jurisdictions in in uh at the National League of Cities, for example, they, when we say Bloomington, they think hospitality. They think the Mall of America. They think the 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 hotel industry. They think the location close to the airport. And so I think it would be absolutely incumbent on Bloomington to be part of this, to show our solidarity and our support of the hospitality industry in general. And I I think this is, I think that's absolutely important to um to move this this piece forward and and to show our support of this. Uh, the B, the 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 seeking funding for flexibility, and this is close to the the discussion that we had, I think, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I I'm in favor of this as well as I was a couple of weeks ago for a couple of reasons. I think what I like about this is that nothing, absolutely nothing is required of us at this moment, other than to put this tool in our tool chest and have it there available for possible for future use. Uh, it it does not address a specific project. It allows us a great deal of flexibility. It allows council oversight and final decision on anything we move forward on. As I said, it doesn't require us to do anything. But it gives us a a a tool as we move forward, as we try and figure out what our next steps will be as we work to bring um our hospitality industry out the other side of this pandemic. And now that I I think we had the discussion a a couple of weeks ago, if if we did nothing, what would happen? And I think we've seen, yes, the numbers are are kind of staggering along. They they could be uh headed in the right direction. I appreciate Bonnie's optimism about the business traveling travelers' numbers going up. But I think the bigger risk is if we do nothing. If we don't have this tool, if we look at an opportunity and we don't have this tool, we're missing the opportunity to help bring that hospitality industry along with us as we start to recover from this pandemic. And so I'm I'm strongly in favor of both A and B. Uh, and Councilmember Loman, I I appreciate your uh addition of a of a seventh kind of bullet point there to indicate our support of the uh of the workers in all of the the hotels and restaurants and bars in our hospitality industry. But I I that's where I'm, that's where I sit right now. I think we we need to move forward on this because um it's uh it it's such an important part of our Bloomington economy, and frankly, it's the the clock is ticking, and we need to, we need to make sure that we we move forward on it. So I see a bunch of hands up right now. I think I saw Councilmember Coulter's first. And uh, Mr. President, I think I saw Commissioner Peterson as well, and then Councilmember Beloga.
Well, it's it's good, Mr. Mayor, if you'd be the gatekeeper, because it's better if just one does it.
So why don't we go with Councilmember Coulter and then Commissioner Peterson and then Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I guess I'm going to kind of take these in reverse order. Um, I would be, I would be comfortable supporting letter B. Um, and and Shane, I appreciate you kind of working on the fly here. My request would be that we remove the words the jobs of and then to make it grammatic, to make sure it makes sense grammatically, it probably works better to move the word workers to after trades. Um, and so that we are, so that it reads that we are supporting hospitality work, hospitality and building trades workers. I want to be clear that we are, we are concerned about the employees, not just the jobs that they hold. Um, beyond that, I I'd be, I'm I'm glad we are specifically calling out workers. I think that that is really, really important and and that makes me frankly much, much more And, and that makes me frankly, much, much more enthusiastic about supporting letter B. So reading through this letter from Hospitality Minnesota, I, I support the overall intent. I support, you know, what, what they are trying to achieve. My, my issue is that, you know, personally, I, you know, I know a little bit about some of the, the specific legislation that they cite from my day job. Um, and, but, you know, and, and sort of some of that kind of thing. I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable supporting every bill listed in that letter. And, and that's where I get a little bit wary. I know it's, I mean, I know it's, it's just a letter, but I, you know, I think if the city of Bloomington is going to support something, we should, we should support it. We should support, you know, every word that's in it. So, you know, I guess I would say maybe the question for you, Mayor is, is the plan to vote on these A and B separately or as one motion? Um, because I, I'm not sure at this point that I can, I can vote for letter A.
Well, I think we can, we can have that discussion. I think we can parse it out to A and B and we can look at and look at them individually. I think I'd be comfortable doing that. Uh, what I don't want to do is to go, uh, within A, within the Hospitality Minnesota proposal and pick out the different spokes on that wheel and say no to this, but yes to these four, that kind of thing.
No, no, I, 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 I have no desire to do that either. So, um, I, I will think about it a little bit more and, and hopefully come to a decision by the time we actually have to vote. Um, but that, that's where I'm at.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember, or excuse me, Commissioner Peterson?
You know, my goal tonight was to get you to call as councilmember, and you just took care of that. I'd like to do this, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, um, so I'm, I'm glad that this is, I'm glad that this is back at the meeting tonight. Um, the, and I understand why the council was reluctant to act on the previous language because that was very broad and not very specific at all. And I think the language that the staff has brought back here, particularly with the, with the change that's been made, I think that's an improvement too. But the language in general under B, um, really, uh, does a good job of kind of setting some guardrails on things. But at the same time, you know, realizes that, you know, we, we won't do every project that, that you could conceivably come up with. That's, that would fit under the B umbrella. We have a long history of using the powers, you know, both at the city and in the Port Authority conservatively to, to kind of make pro, to do projects that make sense. And so I'm, I'm glad that it's back. And I, I really want to see, you know, us stepping up to supporting the hospitality industry. Um, it's, it is one of the biggest industries in the city and it's the sort of thing, you know, you heard Bonnie talk a little bit, but the, the, um, you know, there's a constant need for kind of fresh things to come along and things and, and to kind of, uh, make, make the destination be a place where people are interested in coming back. The water parks, you know, have really been, or the Water Park Hotel that, uh, was built about fifteen years ago now was really something that, that, uh, that was something that brought things back. And I think looking for other projects that are, um, complimentary to the hospitality industry and create new reasons for people to have visits. Bonnie talked about sports facilities is another example. Um, are things that we can really do in order to support the industry and make Bloomington continue to be a destination that people want to go to. You know, I think on the A concept, I think, you know, the, it, my, my thought on A is that if we were kind of, kind of generally supporting it, um, but I, I think, I think, you know, with respect to Councilmember Coulter's feedback, um, you know, a lot of times on these letters, you end up having to take kind of a binary position. And so I think that sometimes in those letters that it's not everything that you support, but in general you support the intent of it, like Councilmember Coulter said. But that's my comments today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, following Steve, who looks like he was reading from my script, uh, is always difficult. But, uh, I will add a few other i- items that, uh, he didn't mention, and that is that time is of the essence. Um, we're not in a vacuum. We have many other communities who are also, uh, trying to support and not necessarily in the state of Minnesota, but around the country, their hospitality industries, which also have been equally devastated as ours has. And we need to, uh, move forward and we need to do it now. I'm very pleased that we're revisiting this tonight and look forward to moving this forward, uh, both with respects to A and B. Uh, the, uh, the general support, I think, uh, Mayor, you, you had mentioned it, that if, uh, on the hospitality letter, we do not support that, uh, that's a, that, that says more almost than if we do support it as Bloomington, uh, because of our position with the hospitality industry itself. So I think it's imperative to look at the greater good. And to use a phrase that has become very popular is, is, uh, not look at, uh, perfect to get in the way of good. So, uh, with that, uh, I'm, I'm really pleased that we've added, uh, uh, the workers into the, uh, uh, platform on B. Uh, because they're integral and, and, uh, uh, probably the more important thing than just the industry. Uh, the industry is there and provides, uh, those jobs and those, uh, people in those jobs make that industry what it is. So, um, with that, I'll, uh, pass the baton to anyone else who, uh, is interested in comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Nelson, I saw your hand up earlier. It's down now. Uh, you're good. Uh, Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, uh, very much, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, staff, uh, for, for all the work here. I, I appreciate, this is very responsive, the conversation we had last time around, uh, and individual conversations I've, I've had with folks have been helpful as well. So thank you for that time. Um, I, I guess in terms, I, I'm kind of two minds, um, on, on this a, a little bit. Um, just briefly, I, I appreciate, I can, I can certainly support A. I think that all makes sense. Uh, on B, um, I, I'm a pretty big proponent of local control, uh, and kind of municipalities being able to create their own destiny. Uh, we've seen this recently, uh, in terms of ordinances and protections we would put in place around stuff like noise standards. Uh, really ensuring we're supporting the, the health and wellness, uh, of our communities. I think on the, the fiscal front, that's true as well, having as much local control over the tools we can leverage to ensure economic vibrancy. Um, so from, from that regard, I think this certainly makes sense. Um, uh, on, on the other side of things, and, and where, um, where I guess I'm a little bit hesitant, uh, it is just considering the range of the nearly infinite range of projects that, uh, this tool could potentially support. Uh, while we will be able to, to take bites of this apple, uh, kind of vote things up or down, I, I think it's just worth mentioning, um, that I think a lot of folks in town, when they hear support for the hospitality industry are going to picture forgivable loan programs or eliminating licensing fees. Um, as, as we've mentioned in previous meetings, kind of that short-term support. Uh, and it is just worth kind of having on the record saying, um, it, it is, uh, another couple of steps forward to say the city is going to leverage new financial tools to become an active player in the hospitality industry. Uh, and help bring to fruition projects that are going to generate, um, visits to town that may not otherwise happen. Um, to, to support the very laudable goal, uh, of ensuring our hospitality industry continues to thrive. So I, I think with, with that idea of maximizing local control and local authority in mind, I'll, I'll support this here tonight. Um, but I think just to put it out there, I'm going to have a lot of chewing to do over the next few months about, um, when a resident asks me, um, you, or a resident says, you're there to make sure my parks are vibrant, my roads are paved, um, and, and our budget is sound. How is this in the scope, uh, of what should be frontline duties for a municipality, uh, building? What could be considered essentially tourist attractions? Um, what criteria am I putting in my mind so that I know of the slew of potential projects? Which of those are appropriate and which are not when the tool is so broad? Uh, so again, thank you for, for all this information. I'll, I'll support this here tonight and I look forward to additional conversations about what are those criteria to figure out? What gets the thumbs up and what, um, is a bridge too far?
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson, your hand is up again. Are you messing with me or are you?
I actually want to talk this.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Sorry. It started to be confusing. Um, no, I, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, one, I support A. I, I recognize that there are some concerns about specifics, but I, uh, think Councilmember Beloga hit it on the head there. Let's not let perfect get in the way of good. Um, and I think there's some good things in there. And I think, uh, the, they'll wrestle with the, the things that aren't as great. Um, in terms of B, I just wanted to say thank you to, um, our staff, to Shane, Jamie, uh, to, um, the Bloomington Convention and Visor Bureau, uh, you know, Bonnie coming in and talking with us. That was one of my big concerns at our last meeting is, you know, where do they stand? Where, where are they at? What is really going on? You know, and that's why I was asking some questions about that. I really appreciate the update and how this could potentially impact, um, what they're doing, what, what is happening in Bloomington. I, I, I strongly think that's good. I do share some of Councilmember Martin's concerns in terms of how some projects come forward here. And that's, you know, why I was looking at things of like, you know, making sure that there's still a public purpose that, you know, we aren't just substituting for the private marketplace. Um, I brought this up yesterday that, you know, I believe in markets and I believe in letting them operate and not having the government get, uh, overly involved where it, uh, isn't beneficial. I mean, if, uh, the market is going one direction, it's, it's not up to us to try to force it to go a different way. With that being said, we have a legitimate role in, um, uh, creating an environment that allows hospitality to thrive and survive. And, um, and I also thank everyone for supporting the, um, direction to help workers on this. So, uh, with that, that being said, I'll, I'd support both of these tonight. And, uh, again, just thank you very much to staff, uh, for our hospitality industry for coming back and, and kind of working through this with us and addressing the concerns.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Loman?
Well, Mayor, I don't want to rush the process here. Um, you know, we've had the opportunity to hear, uh, from a number of, uh, council members and, uh, some of their concerns. Um, I'm so glad that we're, uh, we're here. I think Councilmember Beloga said that. We're back at the table again, uh, from a legislative kind of standpoint. Um, and I, I know that certainly there are concerns with A and the B, but I, I'm hoping that we can, uh, as a council generally, uh, look at our, uh, strategic priorities and values and kind of use that to kind of guide ourselves. I know that the past councils have kind of done that, um, around the good work that they've done, uh, within, uh, uh, within that work, uh, within the, uh, the South Loop. Um, so with that being said, uh, Mayor, do you think it makes sense to kind of move forward on these, these two items here?
I do. I want to make sure that, uh, we have all answered, we've answered all the questions and everybody's had a chance to chime in. Uh, any members of our fellow members of the Port Authority? Want, uh, want to make a comment? Mr. President? Bob, I believe you're, uh, still muted.
Uh, we, we discussed this at the last meeting, but I think in general, any tool that gives us more flexibility is something that is, is beneficial. And, uh, I, I fully understand, you know, some of the concerns when you, you have a number of pieces of legislation in, in A, but I think most of these things are in the context of, of praying in general to support something. And, and obviously people recognize that everything on there is going to become reality, but, but I think we are dealing with something that is, is, is very important. So I would be very much supportive of the council taking action on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, if we are to the point, um, and again, I'd be happy, I'd be fine if we split them into A and B, if, uh, folks would like that. Um, whoever's got the control there, if we could put the motions back up on the screen perhaps. There we are. And, uh, again, I'm, uh, I think if, if we want to split them to A and B, we, we certainly can. And Councilmember Loman, if you wanted to craft a, um, an amendment to, to, ideally, let's split the two to, to allow some flexibility for folks who, who may not see both, but, uh, one or the others.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that, uh, and I, I'll, I'd be happy to second this first, uh, motion here. I think that, uh, Patrick, this is in your district. Uh, you got a lot of hospitality in your district, so I'd hate to step on that. So my suggested, uh, uh, amendment to this would be just to say that the city council, um, uh, would support moving a motion to support the Hospitality Minnesota platform as outlined in the letter, uh, to Governor Walls on March 29th, 21st. Second first motion.
So I heard the, the motion by Councilmember Loman, I think. And did I hear a second by Councilmember Martin?
Uh, yes, I did, Mayor.
Very good. We've got a, we have a motion and a second for the city council to amend the city's legislative policy to sup, support Hospitality Minnesota's platform as outlined in the letter to Governor Walls on March 29th, 2021. Counsel, any additional comments on this? Carolyn, I'm going to ask you to call the roll and we're going to have to do it on a second one as well. So, uh, if you bear with us, please. So Carolyn, if you could please call the roll of the council.
No worries. Bussy?
Aye.
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
No.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes six, one.
Motion carries six, one with, uh, with Coulter as a no vote. Thank you. And now, uh, for our B, could I get a council action, uh, motion on the letter B here?
Mayor, I'd like to, I, I defer to Councilmember, uh, Beloga. I know he is our representative.
Councilmember Loman, why don't we, uh, why don't we let, uh, the, the, the councilmembers who are looking to make the motion? And, and we don't want to make a presumption as to which way the votes are going to go. And I think I'd be more comfortable if we just let folks jump in on their own.
I'd be happy to do, I'd be happy to move this too, if you want me to do that too.
Councilmember Loman?
Okay. Uh, I, Mayor, I'll move to, uh, uh, consider a motion amending the, the city's legislative policy to add the following provision, uh, seeking funding flexibility for local units of government like Bloomington to build and to obtain projects that drive hospitality demand in the future that are supported by hospitality stakeholders. Helps a broad portion of the industry, supports hospitality and building trade workers and minimize private single entity benefits.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Beloga to amend the city's legislative policy to support item B as we have outlined here on the screen and, and as, um, Councilmember Loman offered in his motion. Counsel, additional questions, comments on this? Hearing none? Carolyn, please call the roll.
Bussy?
Aye.
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven, zero passed.
Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. And thank you for the thoughtful discussion on this, for the, uh, uh, the work that has gone into it. Uh, Bonnie, thank you for your perspective. Thank you for the perspective of all. I think this was, th- this is an important, uh, move forward by the city. I think this is an important statement by the city of Bloomington. And I appreciate, as I said, uh, the thoughtful discussion that went into this. This was clearly something that, um, was, was heavy on everybody's mind. We were thinking about it and I, I know it was a good, strong discussion back and forth, uh, on this council. And it worked just like it should have with, uh, uh, a, a discussion, additional discussion, additional information and, and ultimately a vote. So thank you so very much for this. Bonnie, were you raising your hand or were you just giving a wave?
Uh, I was going to do both. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, city council members, uh, uh, president and commissioner, Port Authority members. Uh, first of all, thank you for allowing me to, uh, appear tonight and talk about the thing that I'm so passionate about, but I- But I just want to leave you with one comment. I'm, I'm thrilled at your vote tonight. I think it is such a, a position of strength and from the local, from the city. We are hospitality. It means so much. If this tool would be so great moving forward and I just appreciate the leadership and thank you again for letting me come and talk to you.
You are always welcome, Bonnie. You're always welcome to come and talk to us. You know that.
And now I'll wave.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I think we need a motion as well from the Port Authority.
Okay, well, would you like a motion from the Port Authority supporting the city council action? We, we did not have that in the package, but we can.
I, I believe we did talk about, oh, I'm sorry, it was informational only for the Port Authority. I apologize. I, I thought.
That was last time.
That was last time. I'm confused once again. So very good.
It's not that we don't love the council.
We appreciate the support and we really do.
It's there.
We just want to see Commissioner Keller in person next time.
I keep telling you, you don't and, and much less have it on the record officially.
Right.
Those are two great mysteries are Commissioner Keller and Councilmember Nelson's hair, but we won't have, we won't go there tonight. It's, that's fine.
Once the surgery heals up, I'll go back on video.
I believe that completes our agenda for this evening, the two items that we had on our agenda. Unless there's anything for the greater good, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to adjourn the council portion of the concurrent meeting with the Port Authority. Carolyn, if you could please call the roll of the council.
Bussie.
Aye.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven, zero to adjourn.
The council is adjourned?
Yeah, I would entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Keller. Do we have a second?
Second by Peterson.
Okay, great. Carolyn, you want to call the roll?
Erickson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
And Lund's is absent. Carry six, zero.
Thank you. We are adjourned to support authorities.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks for the discussion.